Today is September 20th. We have a full house with a full agenda. Our first item on the agenda is roll call. All the persons are present and most of the department heads. Also, we have Catherine in the house tonight. Some of you have met her. She's the new library director and she plans on attending council meetings and being available. So, welcome. Our next item is a pledge of allegiance. If you please stand.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hear Mr. Pataki is going to sing. Next item is item four, the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held August 16th. What are your wishes? We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on it? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven As and one Nay. Here onto item five, which is consider the appointment of a regular member to the Water and Light Commission for a term expiring October 1st, 2027. If you see attachment two, those are the interested applicants. We did advise that any interested applicant should probably be here tonight and most likely be prepared to say something should the council want to hear from them. And also let you know that, well, we had four applicants. We did receive a resignation for another member on the Water and Light Commission. So, next month, we will send those, the balance to those applicants. And should we get anybody else in the next month to that meeting for an appointment to finish out that term? I guess, what are your wishes? Do you want to hear from the applicants present? Okay. Who wants to go first? I see Jeff out there, John. Come on in, John. You're the incumbent, I guess. We'll start there.
Thank you. I've been on the commission for nine years and I'm asking for your support for another term. It's been a very interesting experience being on the Water Works and Lighting Commission because there's probably a lot more going on than what people realize. It's more than just servicing electric customers, which are around 15,000 and 8,000 water customers. But it's also trying to provide the most reliable and cost-effective rates for the customers. And we've been able to do that mainly with just, in 2000, Water Works and Lighting Commission was one of the six founding utilities to form Great Lakes. Purchased wholesale power instead of going through stock services. That lowered the price. But also, we're members of the municipal electric utilities of Wisconsin. There's about 81 members and we're active with that. General manager Jim Brown has been very active at the leadership role. Also, he's currently chairing the Great Lakes Utilities. We're also, it's a very highly regulated industry. And being involved locally and also statewide with Great Lakes and also with municipal electric utilities of Wisconsin. We're also members of the American Public Power Association and that's 2,000 members nationwide. We're also partners on projects locally with American Transmission Company. We finished up a project a year or so ago and that's to provide more redundancy in the Midwest grid. But anyway, all these projects have been successful and it's been my honor to be involved with that. It's been accomplished through teamwork from commissioners to general manager and staff and employees. So, are there any questions for me?
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just to introduce myself, Mark Anderson, lifelong resident of the city of Wisconsin Rapids. I'm a, formerly or just recently retired, a career military officer, spent 38 years in the U.S. Army. But parallel with that, I had a career, dual career with Consolidated Water Power Company, Consolidated Papers. Do not, this would be obviously a first appointment for, or opportunity for myself to serve in a role in service to the community and to the city. But, you know, as a career officer of, like I said, 38 years, you know, service to community, service to citizens is not something that's new to myself. In my previous roles in the military, I had a tremendous number of leadership opportunities, opportunities to manage people, manage processes and budgets. And so, while I don't have the experience that the previous speaker had with regards to exposure within Water Works and Lighting Commission, I feel that the experiences that I could bring to the table with regards to managing budgets, managing large, complex organizations or complex issues, that I can bring a perspective that would be valuable to the Water Works and Lighting Commission and the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Subject to anybody's questions, that's all I've really got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Hello. My name is Jeff Penscover. I'm 63 years old and I have been a lifelong resident of Wisconsin Rapids. I'm also the owner, along with my wife, of a manpa type of business called Jeffy Enterprises, a series of eight rental properties, seven in Wisconsin Rapids and one in Bearden. For a number of years, there's been some friction between the Water and Light Company and a group of landlords in an organization called the Wisconsin Rapids Area Property Owners regarding unpaid water and sewer costs by the tenants. About four or five years ago, there was a management change at the Water and Light Company. Along with two other landlords, we sat down with the new management and negotiated a better system of communicating past new accounts with the landlords being more informed of these unpaid accounts. Now, we can actively work with the Water and Light to help resolve their issues along with our own. This new system is still not perfect, but is by far better than what it once was. This has resolved many of the issues. I believe my experience as a salesman, as a landlord and as a business manager will be an asset to this commission. The ability to successfully discuss, negotiate and come to workable solutions is at the forefront of any good organization. I'm welcome for any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Oh.
Could you state your name? I missed your name in the beginning.
Jeff Penscover.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
The fourth applicant, Philip, is not present. So, we always come down to this, what are your wishes? How do you want to, to go down through the voting process or, I guess, make nominations? I guess we'll start that. Jay was first. Then you can go, Patrick.
I'll nominate John Harper.
Thank you. Patrick?
I just have a quick question.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Except for one opening is what we have?
Tonight, correct. And then next month, since the, I just learned about this, that next month, we'll have another opening to finish out a term. So, these candidates will also be, you know, whoever isn't chosen tonight will be brought forward to next month's meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you.
We have one nomination for John. Are there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Jeff Penscover.
Dean?
I would nominate John Harper.
John's already got a nomination, but you're good. Okay. I guess seeing no other nominations, so we have two people nominated. So, do we want to do yes for one candidate and no for another? So, why don't we do yes for John and no for Jeff? Sorry, it sounds like that, but, Cherry, did you have a question? Oh, okay. So, if your vote, if your vote is for John, vote yes. If your vote is, I'm sorry, aye. And then Jeff would be nay. And then we'll go from there. And then am I a tiebreaker or do we do a coin toss on that one? Sounds good. I thought we did a coin toss on discussion. Yeah, so how do you want to break the tie? We've done coin tosses, we've done, what else have we done in the past? Another ballot, a second ballot. I think they're both excellent candidates. So, I think all three of them are excellent candidates. So, I think we're not losing here at all, so. I can break the tie. I'm just trying to think, because they're both good candidates. All three of them are great candidates, so. And that's, we such rarely have that opportunity.
I'm not opposed to a coin flip.
I'm not either.
Okay. Anybody have a coin?
Worked for me.
If we have a coin.
Dean's a councilman on a coin flip. Anybody have a coin? Nobody uses change anymore. Ah, there we go. Paul saves the day. Sure, why don't you? No, I'll, yeah, so why don't, so, this dude. So, John has head, Jeff has tails. Who's calling it? City attorney?
Maybe the council president.
Council president. Since you're the coin, the winner on the coin toss.
What am I doing?
Call heads or tails.
You've already said it.
So, John has heads and Jeff has tails.
So, you're going to call the flip, though, not the win.
So, you're going to call heads or tails.
Whatever it lands on is who wins.
Oh, good point. Wow, we're over it.
Thanks, counselor.
We definitely are over analyzing this. Tails. Yep, I thought it looked like tails. So, Jeff is the appointee tonight and then John, Mark and Philip will come back next week for the remainder of the term. Okay, we're on to item six, is the second reading of an ordinance revising the roles and responsibilities of Park and Rec Commission as recommended by the Park and Recreation Ad hoc Committee and the Park and Recreation Commission. What are your wishes? A motion by Bemke, seconded by Veneman. Is there any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none? Please, motion to approve, I assume. That motion carried five As and three Nays. Item seven is consider a resolution that the city of Wisconsin Rapids be exempt from the payment of any county library taxes provided in section 43.64, parent two, parent B. See attachment four. If you have any questions, we have a library director here. Cherry?
Thank you. I just want to clarify that this is a resolution that we do every year.
Yep.
That is correct. Thank you.
Correct. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just clarification. So, if we, if we don't exempt the payment, then we would make the payment to the county, which is our percentage that we would pay anyways, correct? That would, that's the payment that they're saying we owe for the city, the size we are and everything. We would pay that part if we don't exempt our, if we don't get exempt.
Correct.
And then anything above and beyond that is what we choose to give to the library outside of the county money that they get. Is that correct?
Can you help us out here, Catherine?
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Catherine. I'm so excited to be here. So, this is kind of a standard annual thing. If you are paying at a certain amount, which the city does support its library at that base amount, then you would always pass this because you would be tax exempt. The additional funds that the county kind of collects goes to the library in other ways.
In what ways would that be?
So, every time an out-of-city resident circulates an item from the McMillan Memorial Library, the home county, so Wood County, has to reimburse the city for that circulation at a certain percentage. That's state statute. So, your library is bringing in outside the city revenue streams through those circulations. So, the county and the library kind of have a joint effort to support the library in that way. But because the city is already supporting the library through general property taxes, it doesn't make sense to get taxed on top of that.
So, so all the other outside communities, outside of Wisconsin Rapids, they're paying their portion through the county. So, this, am I, do I understand that right or not?
No.
They're getting taxed a certain amount and paying into the library or no?
So, it depends on what kind of library you have. We have a municipal library, so that means the bulk of the funding comes from the city of Rapids. But in Portage County, there's a county system. So, instead of having individual communities have libraries, the county kind of shares that responsibility. So, there are different ways of funding libraries in our communities, but they're fairly different.
So, what I'm hearing you say, this is, I'm to understand, this is a city, a municipally-funded library, so the county money that comes into it is above and beyond what we're already paying. So, the full bill that we're paying, the county's paying into the library according to, I guess, I'm not, I'm not fully understanding how the library is funded through the county.
So, every city, every community in the state of Wisconsin is responsible to support their libraries. And the city is already doing that by providing the funding for the McMillan Library. So, you don't have to pay the county tax because then you would be paying general property taxes and this county tax.
Okay. Thank you. Patrick? I see Tim's online too, so.
Oh, great. This one's for Tim. I see here it's for $532,800 and I just want to know how that number comes up? If that is like the appropriations amount for, like what is appropriate or what exactly Okay, since Tim's not asking or answering.
Yep. Oh, here, hold on.
Basically, what this resolution is doing is that the city receives from Wood County, based on a formula, whatever, of $642,000 roughly each year to fund the library system. What this resolution is doing is saying that $642,000 that the county is providing to the city is, this adoption of this resolution is exempting this from city taxpayers. So, there's a formula that they go through so that city residents do not pay this portion on their county taxes.
Correct. Everybody else in the county does pay that tax.
Correct. And there's a, in the calculation, there's a level support based on, you know, I don't have the calculation of this year, but it's roughly like 400,000 to 500,000 that the city has to provide that much in order to be exempted from city residents paying this portion on their county taxes.
Is it $400,000 plus the $532,000 or is it $400,000 in exclusion of this?
Basically, if I remember, I did not get this year's calculation, but based on if my rec, my memory serves me right, it's approximately between 400,000 and 500,000 that it's a level support in order to be exempted, for city taxpayers to be exempted from the Wood County library tax.
400,000 to 500,000 total, not in addition to this 532,800.
No, we have to, we have to provide a level support of between 400,000 and 500,000. I'm looking for it. I didn't get this year's calculation. Looking for it right now for last year's. Okay. I'm staying corrected. Okay. So, based on the calculation, the tax exemption calculations for 2022 was 335,000. So, in order for the city to be exempted, city taxpayers to be exempted from the Wood County, what they levy for Wood, for support of our library would have to be 335,000. I don't have this year's calculations.
What are your wishes? We have a motion by Ebbetson, seconded by Austin, to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. We're on to item eight, consider a resolution recognizing Kurt Witneski and Gail Sumi for their service with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. See attachment five. And what are your wishes? We have a motion by Veneman, seconded by Bemke. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. We're on to item nine, which is a presentation on historic preservation and certified local government programs by the Community Development Department. Kyle?
Thank you. I'll try to be quick here and I want to let everyone know that if you guys want to thoroughly go through this presentation on your own, at your own time, I'd be happy to share it after the meeting. And I apologize for those in the audience. We were not set up here to display this on multiple screens, so you'll see the presentation here. And again, it may be a little difficult to read. I'll try to summarize and move quickly. Ultimately, what we're looking to do is to amend our chapter 31 Historic Preservation Ordinance and apply for a certified local government through the State Historic Preservation Office. And this is something that we could pursue really at any time, but we're looking to do this in the fall and into the winter. And there are a number of reasons that we're looking to make this a priority. So, you'll probably question what the CLG program is. It's basically a voluntary partnership between the Wisconsin Historical Preservation Office and municipalities within the city or within the state. Currently, I believe there's 76 CLG communities within the state of Wisconsin. There's a map at the end that shows many of them that you'll recognize. It was established in 1980, again, to preserve and protect the historic character of many communities. And then it can also, there are different grants that you can apply for through the state with historic preservation planning, and that's one of the reasons we're pursuing this initiative. So, what does it mean? So, it means that you have to adopt a standardized ordinance that allows the city to review designated properties, establish an ordinance, establish a historic preservation commission, enforce state or local legislation, maintain a system or a survey inventory of local historic places and then provide for public participation in a local historic preservation program. So, ultimately, depending on the feedback tonight, we'd bring back an amendment to chapter 31 to the Legislative Committee that outlines several of these changes to allow us to apply to become a CLG community. So, the benefits of the CLG program, it allows again for us to apply for no-match grants, meaning that if we, if we obtain a grant for an intensive survey or for a nomination of a historic property, many times the State Historic Preservation Office will cover the costs entirely for those applications. It enables economic development through historic tax credits that homeowners and businesses can apply for, both state and federal historic tax credits. It facilitates place-making, builds identity and it does a, you know, a number of other things related to, you know, vibrancy. Communities that have adopted historic districts have created walking tour brochures, have placed different street signs to signify their historic districts and many other things. So, these are the things that ultimately the grants can pay for. Again, a survey, which looks at all the city properties and identifies those that would qualify for. would qualify for nomination on the State and Historic Register of, uh, Historic Places. You can create historic preservation plans, different educational projects, and, and as I noted before, uh, unique projects like walking tour brochures and so forth. So again, we've got a few individually listed properties within the community. Um, those are listed on the National and State Historic Preservation Registry. Uh, however, um, there are several other resources within the community that are not currently, uh, identified as being on the state or local registry. So ultimately, we're, I feel as though we're missing out, um, on these, what these homeowners could access for their properties. A lot of people, when they think of, um, historic preservation, they think of a additional layer of regulation. It's not the intent, uh, of our office to regulate locally any sort of historic preservation design guidelines. Um, while there will be certain sections of the ordinance that's brought back before Legislative Committee, identifying the potential option to do that, it is not our intent. Our intent really is to draft the ordinance and then apply for a survey through a grant and then to, um, nominate several districts into the National Register of Historic Places. Once they're on that registry, those homeowners, if they choose to pursue improvement projects interior, on their interior or the exterior of the home, uh, they can, in some instances, if it's a commercial income-producing property, obtain forty percent tax credit back, uh, from the federal and state government. If it's a residential property, they can obtain twenty-five percent, or, yeah, twenty-five percent, uh, of a total project cost back in, um, income tax credits. So if you've got a twenty thousand dollar re-roofing project and you're in a historic district, you can apply for tax credits and you can get five thousand of that back, um, on income tax credit. So again, I, I feel as though, um, it's of best interest to many of our neighborhoods that have those historic character. Uh, and this is step one to get them in, uh, state and nationally-recognized historic districts. If they do not want to apply for tax credits, they can take their cedar, cedar shakes on their house and they can install vinyl siding. This in no way regulates, uh, what they can and can't do. Um, it only sets the ability to potentially at some point do that, but it's not my intent ever to do that unless one of these districts that's identified, all the neighbors approach the city and say, hey, we want additional layer of protection. Uh, we want to be locally designated, and at that point, we could look at possibly taking the next steps. But, um, that is not my intent to create any sort of added layer of regulation for any homeowners in the community, but really to offer the ability for them to obtain, uh, state and national tax credits. I'll kind of skip through here. Um, here's the map that shows, uh, all the communities within the state. Again, there's seventy-six CLGs in Wisconsin, uh, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Anybody have any questions? I guess more so the purpose was to introduce you to the concept and there'll be further information in future meetings that Kyle wanted to present. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Patrick?
You listed a lot of, uh, positives about this. Are there any negatives?
Um, the time and effort that staff puts into amending the ordinance, applying for grants. Um, we also, part of it, uh, you saw as a bullet point, perhaps you didn't, um, is that we have to create a historic preservation commission. So that means, you know, it's another body, uh, that has, has some legislative power. Because it's not our intent to locally designate anything at this point, um, the commission would meet very infrequently. Uh, they would probably meet if we were to apply for a grant to conduct a survey. They would probably meet, uh, if we were to apply for nomination to the state or federal register. So I think initially, it's just kind of that upfront staff work, uh, but really, other than that, there isn't, uh, there isn't any negatives to this.
And the grant money that you're talking about, how much? In your estimation is this, uh, grant money? And it, does it go back towards the historical site itself? Or is, does it go to the city?
So, uh, the first step we would take is to apply for a, what's called a historic intensive survey. And the state has rec, recommended certain contractors, third-party individuals who have a background in conducting these, uh, types of surveys. Um, so they'll make a recommendation, they'll, uh, they'll then grant us funds. Um, it could be anywhere from five to fifteen to twenty thousand dollars for these surveys. And then we release an RFP, um, and then we select, uh, a consultant. And again, that's what the Historic Preservation Commission would do. They'd select one of those that responded to the RFP. And then, uh, basically, the State Historic Preservation Office covers the costs, I believe, on a reimbursement standpoint. Um, and then we'd get the survey. And the survey would indicate what neighborhoods or properties are, um, good contenders for nomination to the state and federal register of historic places or what areas, districts could be nominated. After that, then, we would apply for another grant to then hire another consultant, release another RFP to nominate these districts and create them so that those homeowners have access to those tax credits. That process, uh, could take anywhere from three to five years, just given the grant cycles and the steps involved within that process.
Okay. So there's no additional cost, is what you're saying?
Correct. These grants are typically covered at a hundred percent by the State Historic Preservation Office.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. We'll move on to item ten. Consider for the adoption, the action of the Plan Commission, Planning Commission at its meeting held September eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Kyle?
One moment, I've got to switch gears here. The Plan Commission met at four P M. on September eighth, two thousand twenty-two in the council chambers. A list of members is available in the Community Development Office and Clerk's Office. Item one, or I'm sorry, the meeting was called to order at four P M. Item one was approval of the report from August first, two thousand twenty-two of the Plan Commission meeting. Motion by Goodrow to approve the report, seconded by Daven. That motion carried four zero. Item two was a request from Vandewell and Associates, uh, for update on the recovery and redevelopment plan. And Director Kearns provided an update. There was no action on this item. Item three was a request from Agralel Jackson for an extraterritorial CSM in the town of Saratoga. Uh, parcel ID is identified. Director Kearns provided an update. Uh, there was a motion by Daven to approve the request. Seconded by Goodrow, that motion carried four zero. Susan Feath also, at this point, joined the meeting. Item number four was a request from Joe Winkleman for an extraterritorial CSM in the town of Grand Rapids. That address and parcel is identified. Motion by Goodrow to approve that extraterritorial CSM, seconded by Austin. That motion carried four zero. Thad Kubisak also entered the meeting. Item number five, uh, was a request from Carol Winrow Brody for site plan review to construct a greenhouse and other site improvements at twenty-three twenty Sampson Street. Parcel ID is shown. Uh, staff, Community Development staff summarized the request. There was a motion by, motion by, um, Kubisak to approve the request, subject to the following conditions identified in the staff report. There was a second by Goodrow. That motion carried six zero. Item six was a request from PB Two Architecture and Engineering for a public hearing and action on a request for a conditional use permit to amend, or, yeah, conditional use permit amendment to expand the retail use by constructing an addition onto Walmart. Uh, the address is identified and parcel number. Community Development staff summarized the request. A public hearing opened at four fifteen P M. Speaking against, uh, Brian Drolinger. Speaking in favor, Amy Miles, Architect for PB Two Architecture and Engineering. That public hearing closed at four eighteen P M. There was a motion by Feath to approve the request, subject to the following conditions listed in the staff report. Seconded by Daven. That motion carried six zero. Item number seven was a request from Altman Construction, Inc., representing Mary's Place for a public hearing and action on a request for a conditional use permit to renovate a building for multifamily housing in the operation of a temporary residential shelter at five twenty Eighth Avenue South. Parcel ID is noted. Community Development staff summarized the request. A public hearing opened at four twenty-two P M. There were four individuals speaking against, and there were ten individuals speaking in favor. That public hearing closed at four fifty-five P M. The commission, commissioners had several questions in regards to the operation of the, uh, the use uh, to which the applicant responded. There was a motion by Blazer to approve the request for a conditional use permit to renovate a building for multifamily housing in the operation of a temporary residential shelter at five twenty Eighth Avenue South, subject to the conditions outlined within the staff report. There was a second by Goodrow. That motion carried five one with Kubisak voting against. Item eight was a request from the City of Wisconsin Rapids for a public hearing and action to amend Chapter eleven of the zoning ordinance, Appendix A and Appendix B, to reclassify and define tourist rooming house. Community Development staff provided a summary. There was a public hearing at five thirty P M. No one spoke against or in favor. That public hearing closed at five thirty-one. Director Kearns provided an overview, um, and answered several commissioner questions in regards to the history and, uh, common councils' concerns. There was a motion by Daven to approve the request to amend Chapter eleven of the zoning ordinance, specifically Appendix A, Appendix B, both, uh, to define tourist rooming house. That was seconded by Blazer. That motion carried five one with Feath voting against. Number nine was a motion to adjourn by Kubisak, seconded by Goodrow. That motion carried six zero. The Plan Commission meeting adjourned at five fifty-eight P M. Thank you.
What are your wishes? Just so you know that items six and seven have conditional use permits in them. Matt?
Uh, can I hold out item seven, please?
Yes. Any other items? So I don't see any other. So we have a motion by Austin, seconded by Evanston. Uh, so, um, we'll vote on the balance of the report. So please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A zero nays, uh, regarding item seven. Mr. Zachary?
Uh, I'd like to acknowledge some people in the audience from the community that may have something to say.
So we have a number of people in the audience, and I'm sure some want to speak in favor and some want to speak against this. How do you want to handle this? Three minutes. Cause technically, it's already been, everything was said in a public hearing.
Right, the public hearing was already had, and so, but I guess it's up to the council how you want, I mean, you could have the applicant explain, you know, the application again and then just take comments or, but, right, it probably could, should be limited somewhat.
Sounds good. So why don't we, Mr. Rehm?
Thank you. And that was, I guess, going to be my comments is that, uh, you know, the public hearing was, was held last week and, uh, people, a number of people were present, a number of people spoke. And it gets to the, uh, council action of tonight and basically, uh, unless there'd be questions or something maybe of somebody or something, that something needs to be explained is that, uh, action epic comes down to what the council wants to do. And so where attorney, uh, mentioned that we, the hearing was held last week and all that, that's true and that's what was done. So we're here to make a decision on what was done, uh, last week, I think, anyway. And so I guess it's up to however this council wants to proceed, but, uh, it's, uh, the ball is in our court to say, so what to do.
Uh, Matt?
Well, I guess I'm just curious, after Mr. Rehm spoke, as to how do we, how do we go about doing this then?
It's up to, I guess, this group here. Um, I see there's several council people that wants to talk, so why don't we go through those and then kind of decide, you know, if the council wants everybody an opportunity? Or if you're not going to entertain any conversation, then you can have your discussion and vote? If you want to do that way. So, uh, Mr. Veneman?
I'm not opposed to, um, allowing people to speak. I do think we need to limit it. Three minutes seems reasonable.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Evanston?
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, have just some additional questions before I'd like to vote on it.
Absolutely.
Um, someone from Mary's Place, so I would appreciate if I had that opportunity. Thank you.
I think if, uh, well, Patrick?
I would like to hear everybody that would like to speak, and I think three minutes is appropriate. I'm, I'm all for listening to whoever has to talk in for, in favor of or against it.
That. Okay. So why don't we have, um, oh, Mr. Austin?
I too am in favor of hearing anybody that would like to speak. Um, I think maybe starting off with anybody representing Mary's Place or Altman would be the wise choice.
You're one step ahead of me. Um, I guess, why don't we have Adam or, yeah, from Mary's Place or who's going to speak on behalf of Mary's Place, speak? And then, um, entertain, um, anybody else that wants to speak in favor and against? And then, uh, opportunity for any council people that might have questions for Adam or anybody else? Kind of running the route that way? Um, yeah, I think like three minutes.
All right.
And be fair. So
Let me know when I can.
Speed talk.
Uh, can I start? All right. Um, my name's Adam Fisher. I'm affiliated with Mary's Place. I've been affiliated with them since two thousand eighteen, uh, in Marshfield. Uh, just a little bit about Mary's Place. It is a five oh one C three nonprofit that has been in existence since two thousand and five. Our mission is to provide shelter for those in need, offer hope to those who feel hopeless and seek to help people find restoration by helping low-income and low-income individuals and families have affordable transitional housing. Based on the lack of affordable housing here in Southwood County, many different agencies and individuals approached us about coming to Wisconsin Rapids or helping Wisconsin Rapids start its own nonprofit. Over a series of multiple months, many conversations, um, it came to the point where they asked us to help form a steering committee and move forward. Uh, we have received over two million dollars from a private foundation, uh, to buy the property, remodel it, uh, and it gives us one year's worth of operating budget, uh, for that first year. The building is currently gutted and, uh, Altman Construction is, um, ready to start remodeling the building once the sale of the purchase goes through. Uh, in addition, Mary's Place has again started a steering committee that we're working with to help, um, provide this facility to the people of Southwood County and Wisconsin Rapids. One thing I do want to help people understand is what transitional living facility is. If, we handed these out. I don't know if you have your packet, but there is an emergency shelter. There are transitional living, there are community specialized housing, and there are permanent housing. We are considered a transitional living facility. So we are not an emergency shelter. We do not, uh, bring people in for one night, one night only. A lot of times you can think of the Salvation Army where there might be a line of people going to the shelter trying to get just a place to sleep that night. That's not what Mary's Place is. Mary's Place helps people for six to twelve months. Yes, they have been homeless. They have no income. They're low income. But it's a program-based model where, yes, we help them have a facility where they can live, but we are working with them to build life skills, build financial skills, and find work. Once they find work, they pay program fees into the program. Once they find work, they pay program fees into the program, and we are helping really rebuild and try to rehabilitate the individuals. We primarily work with people, yes, who have a history of being in recovery. I think people in recovery are some of the most heroic people I've ever met, and so, we do work with them, and, but we are very involved in this facility. We have staff living in the facility, we have volunteers, we have security.
If you can wrap it up, Adam.
Yep. So, really, we are here today in hopes to see this come through and help Southwood County. Thank you.
Hold on a second. So, do you want to ask your questions now, or do you want to hear everybody out, then ask? Go ahead. We can do both.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Adam. I just have just a few questions. I know I've been doing my research, but, so as far as the program, so I know it states from 10 to 2, they're out looking for work, so who's providing them transportation for that?
They are working with different agencies to get that transportation. We do have donors that do give gas cards, do line up cabs in Marshfield, but they are, some are walking to their places of employment, some are walking to the library to get online, to apply, some are walking to jobs, some are getting transportation, transportational help. We work very closely with EFSET in Wood County, so they're also a lot of times working with a caseworker with EFSET.
And I would assume Human Services, Veterans, Job Center, DVR, Health Department. So, there is a case manager that kind of coordinates with the prospective tenant, as well as the agencies that they would need help from?
Yep. We provide case management at Mary's Place, and we also, upon, once we approve their application and we come in, we start helping, if they don't have the services, to refer them to the proper services to meet those needs.
And I know you stated that a lot of them are people that have, are in the process of rehab process, and I know when I was printing off some stuff, I found, I don't know if it's still open, but the Oxford House for Men in Wisconsin Rapids, Recover Hope Ranch, Shirley's House of Hope in Marshfield, and a lot of those places have conditions for admissions. Some of them test urine samples on a weekly basis, or drug testing, and Wood County can come in and with the search dog for drug dogs. Is that, I don't see, I heard something about it, but I don't see anything in writing. How does that program work?
We do all of the above. So, we work with the Wood County Sheriff's Department, they do bring the dog through. We do drug tests, we do breathalyzers for alcohol, we do all of that. We are actively engaged in making sure that they have a mentor through, helping them through that process. If you're familiar with AA or NA, they call them sponsors. We're actively working with them to find a sponsor. As part of the program, they are required to go to three meetings a week. Meetings can be AA, NA meetings, they can be church functions, they can be any type of event that brings some type of life skills or some type of betterment to their life.
And then, so if they're found positive for drugs or alcohol or something like that, I mean, are they kicked out? I mean, you're out the door?
In most cases. I mean, there is a rare exception. In the past, we have had a rare exception here and there where we will work with people, but I can tell you more times than not, yes, because of the, we care about the sobriety of other people in the house, we take it very seriously when someone does test positive.
And then, just a few more questions. Sorry. So, what I'm confused as, so, it kind of says a homeless community, you know, for jobless, but yet other times in here you say you're not a homeless shelter. So, if I would meet the criteria, however, there's people that are, it's kind of like two different programs. You have your transitional ones that are working, you're, you know, probably trying to save money to come up with maybe a down payment for a home, or, you know, get a hedge so they can make rent on their own. Those people are paying like $320 a month, but what, I mean, I know it's pride, but if I could rent for $320 a month, how am I ever, you know, because it says there's not a guideline that you kick them out? What if they stay there forever, where I have someone, you know, living under the bridge with a child that could benefit the program? How, how do you?
So, they have six.
Who makes that decision?
In the program guidelines, they have six months to be at Mary's Place. Now, on occasion, we will allow people to stay past the six months, so if they are unable to truly find adequate housing for various circumstances, we will sometimes work with them. That has sometimes gone into seven, eight, or nine months. But six months is usually the goal of, we are trying to buy this, by the end of six months, help them create some permanency and have housing. The reason, I also want to say, you talk about, we don't call ourselves a homeless shelter. The reason we don't call ourselves a homeless shelter is, really, if you go back to this document here, emergency shelters, when you usually say a homeless shelter, you're thinking an emergency shelter. You're coming in to stay warm for that night. Dead of winter, below zero weather, I'm going to go to the homeless shelter and find a place to sleep that night. That's not what we are. So, when we say we are not a homeless shelter, what we're really saying is we're not an emergency shelter. We are transitional living, so we are, we are designed to provide people who, yes, are homeless, find stability, and move towards a permanency plan.
Okay.
So, that's what we are.
Okay. Just one more, one more question. So, I was reviewing the plans from Altman Construction, and I see that there's the three floors, and I guess I was kind of confused because I thought it was 13 rooms? I guess I was assuming they were, I don't want to say cots lined up in there, but I guess I didn't realize that it was actually an apartment. They have their own kitchen, they have their own thing. But in many of them, I know the Genesis room, I know they have a couple family rooms, and the rest, but I, what my question is, I guess, many, almost all the rooms I looked at, they have two single beds in each apartment. Now, so if I'm single and I come in there, and let's say I'm the only woman in there, so I get the whole place and I only get the one, I get the apartment with one bed when I could get two, but the rest are all men, so would you stick a man in with the, I mean, I mean, I'm just, because it's, to me, it'd be wasting the room, and I guess I just was kind of confused how you do, I mean, how that works.
Yeah. If I'm understanding the question correctly, so there will be various different rooms. We have two rooms per apart, let's call it an apartment, because it's almost like an apartment. There will be two rooms. There will be an individual in one room and an individual in another room. There'll have to be two women per room, two men per room. There will be one floor with family units, because there is a large need for people who do not have housing and do not have a permanency plan here in Southwood County.
And I'm assuming, one last question. I'm assuming that there is, in your program requirements, I'm not trying to be discriminatory or anything, but obviously, if someone has a felony, you know, child sexual, or, you know, or whatever, that obviously they wouldn't fit.
Yes.
In your program.
Per the program guidelines, we will not take a sex offender. We will not take anybody who has committed a violent crime. Now, if it's 20 years ago, we will sometimes look at that, but a lot of times, we're looking at the background checks, looking at recent criminal history, if there is any, but we do not take violent offenders or sex offenders.
And then, one last question, I promise. If, so I, I'm assuming, once we get going, a lot of people are going to talk either for or against that, but I mean, the impression that people are going to be lining up, you know, you're open, they're knocking on your doors, and let us in. What kind of timeframe are we looking from the time that you open? I mean, I'm assuming you don't just let them walk in, I mean, there's a background check, there's, I'm assuming it's not just line up and let me in, what?
I know what you're saying.
The timeframe, I guess, of what, for acceptance to the program.
No, I understand. It takes, it takes usually up to two weeks for them to get accepted into the program. There's two interviews, they have to fill out an application, there's two background checks, we do reference checks. So, there's different steps along the way. You know, I say up to two weeks. If they're very, very diligent, it can sometimes be a week. Usually, most cases, up to two weeks before they're even getting whether or not they're accepted or denied.
Thank you.
Mr. Rehm?
Thank you. Probably Adam too to answer. There's three floors, three floors of the building.
Yes.
And is that all going to be used and redeveloped?
Yes.
As it's gutted?
We're re, we're redeveloping all the floors, yes.
All for this purpose?
Yes.
Okay. Question, and not a, just to clarify, in the explanation it has, which maybe where people get confused or not, a building for multifamily housing and the operation of a temporary residential shelter. Now, those things go together, but some people may look at it as a multifamily housing, as housing would be for anybody. That's not. The building's for strictly resident, temporary residential housing.
Yes.
Okay. How many units in total?
You know, I'm trying to remember. Eleven.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
Thank you. And with the use of all three floors, and it's gutted, and with ADA requirements, does an elevator have to be installed, or?
Yeah. It is my understanding, the city told us, we did not have to put an elevator, as long as there was accessibility to one room, that could be handicapped accessible. So, the way I understand it, we will be on the lower level, be essentially creating a ramp to get down to that room.
Okay. Thank you. And let's see. I think that's all.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Veneman?
Thank you, Adam. Could you just quickly elaborate? You outsourced the background check, or tell us a little bit about what the background check is?
Sure. With, in Marshfield, we currently, when they apply, they have to give us permission to do a background check, so we look on CCAP. So, that's the first background check, is we thoroughly go through CCAP to look. The second background check is we work with the Marshall Police Department to receive the municipal background check. They give us documentation. They might have to redact some things, but we essentially get the report from the Marshall Police Department showing everything that has come through their records, and so those are the two background checks that we receive. Most everyone who is working or wanting to come and apply usually has some type of relationship with a caseworker at Human Services, some cases is working with the jail discharge planner at Wood County. So, we usually, once they're referred to us, we have a pretty good idea of their background already, because many of them are already receiving services.
Thank you. And so, we'd be doing, the theory is there'd be a similar system.
Yes. Ideally. I mean, I can't speak whether the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department would provide the second background check, but that, yes, would ideally be the system, as we want to have a two-background-check system.
Thank you.
Ms. Evanston?
Thank you. Adam, just a question I forgot to ask.
Yeah.
So, I know you're, we had received, us alderpersons, several emails from some of the people related directly to this, to this building as it is, as it sits today. I know it just kind of worked out this way, but has, has the organization looked for any other possible locations instead of that one? I mean, I know some people had concerns because A Street's our main street, I know where the one in Central, you know, in Marshfield is, is on Central Avenue, so jobs are more readily accessible. I mean, is there a facility that could be used that is closer to Human Services, you know, the Riverblock Building, the Job Center, you know, closer to the job market? Have you looked at a different facility, or was it just, this just worked out and let's just go with it here?
No, and we have, we have not looked at multiple facilities. This facility was really, in many ways, presented to us. When we applied for this grant that we're receiving, we applied for that grant contingent on this building. So, if this doesn't go through, we would have to have a conversation with the grantor, whether or not that, those funds could be considered for any other facility. Even when we applied, we were creating a budget on that facility. So, in many ways, it is contingent currently on the current location.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Fisher, offhand? All right, thank you.
All right.
So, I guess, why don't, well, obviously, we have people in favor and people against this, so anybody that probably wants to speak in favor of it, just kind of take your turn coming up, three minutes, and if you could state your name and address, please.
Hi. My name is Keely Mingle. My address is W-1658 Sand Road, Granton. I recently moved to Clark County, but I've lived in Wood County all my life, up until a couple months ago. I am also a Board of Director for Mary's Place. Since 2016, I've been involved with Mary's Place. I used to be a manager at Mary's Place, and I am also on the steering committee for this project through my job with the Wood County Health Department. Adam already touched on quite a bit of what I was going to talk about in regards to the programs that Mary's Place offers and will be offering at the Wisconsin Rapids location. Those, some of that information is included in the packet. We'd be happy to talk more about the program afterwards, too, if you would like to follow up and contact us. I would like to touch more on safety. I know that's a big concern for many people, and so I just want to mention some of the safety measures that we have in place in Marshfield, and we will also have these measures in place in Wisconsin Rapids. We do have one live-in manager and also one site director, and then we also have board members and volunteers who help with needs. So, there's pretty much always somebody at Mary's Place who can help, who has an eye on what's going on, and who is there to mentor people who live there. We also, as Adam said, operate on house rules. We have a whole list of rules that we go through with every individual who is accepted into our program. If they do not follow the rules, they do have to leave. And we have a curfew, so in Marshfield, it's 10:00 PM. Quiet hours run, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and only people who are living at Mary's Place have access to the building. In Wisconsin Rapids, we will have a key fob, so if that person no longer is allowed to stay at Mary's Place, we, with the click of a button, they can no longer have access. And then, also, visitors are not allowed in participant rooms. If they do have a visitor, if we do have a visitor come, they do have to check in and check out, so their name is on paper, and we know who is in and out of our buildings. We also have cameras in Marshfield located inside and outside of the building in common areas. We monitor those cameras regularly. If an incident happens, we go back, we review cameras, and we figure things out, so that will be the same for Wisconsin Rapids. We also are alcohol and drug free. Like Adam said, we have many people living there who are in recovery, and we do not want to jeopardize anybody's sobriety. So, if somebody does present with, you know, drugs in their system, or if we think that they look off, we can give them a urine, a urine analysis or a breathalyzer, and depending on the situation, they can be asked to leave immediately.
You're down to about five seconds.
Okay. I don't have anything else to say anyways. I was just going to say, I'm wrapping up, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Next?
Hello, my name is Danita Carlson, and I am a volunteer for Mary's Place
My name is Danita Carlson, and I am a volunteer for Mary's Place, Wisconsin Rapids. I have lived in the Southwood County area for over 50 years and have worked here for over 35 years, most of which was in professions that care for our community's health and well-being. I love this community and want the best for all individuals who live and work here. I'm here to share that the Mary's Place project will be a blessing to our community by providing an affordable housing option for adult men and women, by decreasing the number of individuals experiencing housing instability, by increasing access to already-available community services. This project targets an underserved population who need a hand-up, and Mary's Place can provide that. And, the project brings our community together to meet the needs of the most vulnerable in our community. Mary's Place is a nonprofit that relies on volunteers to fulfill their mission. So, since April, I have been volunteering my time, meeting with many within our community, churches, businesses, and individuals who want to give of their time, talent, and treasure to see this project succeed. I have literally spoken to dozens of people in the Wisconsin Rapids area at all meetings. There has been nothing but positive comments about this project. Discussions included how they could be a part of this project before the doors open, once people are staying at Mary's Place, and also aftercare, once people find permanent, stable housing. How do we support them and how do we help them be successful outside the walls of Mary's Place? To hear the support of our community really fueled my passion for this project. What I've seen the past several months was this project is truly one that is uniting our community. We've seen far too much division in the world the past few years, and to see a project bringing people together, uniting them in purpose, is really, truly gratifying. We have businesses donating funds. We have individuals donating furniture, people helping at the building, churches who have committed to donation drives, churches and individuals who have committed to mentoring and adopting, mentoring people and adopting a room. And the list goes on and on. I met with a church yesterday that wants to focus on aftercare when people leave, leave Mary's Place. What would that look like? Maybe adopting mom, helping her with parenting, offering counseling, helping to set up a home. These are all things that they talked about. The discussions were really about, about transforming a person's life and how this could be, have a generational impact, not only on the family, but really on our community. And this could all happen through Mary's Place. In closing, I would like to say, people of Wisconsin Rapids and Wood County, our mission should be to love our neighbors. And what better way to do that than to offer a place where people can have a roof over their head, experience support and encouragement, connect with others who want to love and care for them, and to help restore their dignity and hope? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Doug Christensen. I'm the Mental Health Officer with the Wood County Sheriff's Department. Since the establishment of the Mental Health Officer position, I've been able to locate a lot of very good resources that are available right here in Wood County. But it's become very clearly evident that in Southwood County, we have a big hole in the area of housing. Now, looking at it from an outside standpoint, that may not look like a big deal, but a lot of our resources require a local address to be able to access those resources. And I personally observed people that I've worked with or have been working with turned away from resources that would have helped them because at that time, they were considered homeless. Now, up until this point, a lot of time and effort has been going into this project to make sure that Mary's Place succeeds in Wisconsin Rapids. We have many community stakeholders and volunteers that have been helping up till this point, and they've not only, not only helping up to this point, but they're rendering their support for the long haul, for the participants that do utilize Mary's Place. At the beginning of this project, we received a lot of letters of support for this. Some of those supporters include the Aspirus Riverview Hospital and Clinics, the Family Health Center of Marshfield, Love, Inc., McMillan Library, the United Way of Southwood County, and then, Wood County Offices of Child Support, the Health Department, Human Services, and the Drug Treatment Court. Since, after receiving those letters, they went to the private organization that's funding this project. Since those letters went out, more outpouring of support has been coming in, notably from every one of our local law enforcement agencies, the Wood County Veteran Affairs Office, North Central Community Action Program, and many more. Now, because of time constraints, I can't give you examples of the people that I'm working with, but I'm telling you, housing is a very, very high priority for people's recovery and being able to step into a new life, being able to start over, to succeed, and get back to where they know that they want to be. This housing opportunity will have a positive impact on our Southwood County community. Mary's Place has been in operation in the Marshfield area for many, many years, and they've been supporting the housing problem in the Marshfield area. By being able to collaborate with them here, it will help ensure this project's success in Wisconsin Rapids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mike, then Christie.
Hey, Air Blazer, members of the Common Council, staff, concerned citizens. My name is Mike Hidner. I'm at 981 First Avenue South, and I'm about three and a half blocks from this property, and I also own a rental property that's a half a block from this property, so I've got an interest in this. And one other thing, I've got a closer interest because, I don't know how many of you, but we took in a homeless person for four years, and my oldest child was 10 years old when it was in our own personal home. So, I have experience with homelessness, and I know what it's like for those people to get a hands-up and this sort of thing. And we've got a perfect organization here right now that has been doing it for 12 to 15 years in Marshfield. They don't have to reinvent the wheel. They can come in here and take off right at the start. They have great constraints and controls of things at the property, so I think it'll be well taken care of. And not too many years ago, Denny Pollock knows, mid-'70s, I was alderman. I sat in your same seats. Not really, because we were in the county board chambers, because this building was being built at the time. But I sat in your same seats, and I know this is a hard decision, but it's a decision that has to be made, and I think for all of us, when we look back 10 or 20 years from now, we want to be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you. Christie.
Good evening. I'm Christy Aggie. My address is 1761 Riverwood Lane. I've been a resident of Rapids for a little over eight years, and I do work for the Wood County Health Department, so I've, I've talked with many of you before. Organizations report community residents are requesting immediate housing placement services as they are homeless and without long-term housing or unstable housing. These individuals right now are being referred more than 45 minutes away to Marshfield, Mary's Place, or 30 minutes away to Salvation Army Warming Shelter. This poses a geographic barrier for transportation and lack of familiarity with other local community resources. Mary's Place in Marshfield served 160 people in 2020. Forty-three percent of those people were Southwood County residents. That's 69 people who had to move 45 minutes away from their existing supports in order to get their basic needs taken care of. Without housing, it is near impossible to gain steady employment, maintain healthcare services, or work toward better quality of life. Housing helps people build a safe and secure life, which leads to productivity benefiting the whole community. I know firsthand what it's like to live with, to have a family member struggle with this, and while it wasn't when I lived in this community, my sister ended up living in a transitional housing facility, but had to go to Milwaukee as she struggled with the substance use issue for 18 years. Had there been a transitional housing facility where I lived at the time, which was south of Eau Claire with my parents, she would have had a great place, a great place to go and be close and have support so that she wouldn't have to have been away from her children for a whole year. These people in Southwood County could be the child of your neighbor, our coworker's siblings, the mother of a father or of a child in our school districts. These individuals are in need of a system in Southwood County that can provide a support that they have not had access to in the past, to help them have stable employment, leading to stable income and stable housing, and to become a contributing member of society. I leave you with a quote from Coretta Scott King. "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members." And I would have to agree with Mr. Hidner that this decision that we're making is really for our future generations that will live here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Brandon Brewink. I live at 3531 Enchanted Drive in Wisconsin Rapids. I'm also your neighbor. I work at Wood County Human Services, so I want to speak to you a little bit from a human services lens and our work with Mary's Place over the last several years. In Northwood County, Mary's Place has become a vital partner of Wood County Human Services. We have referred a number of folks over to services, and Mary's Place have been really happy with the results. They come from a very team-type approach in supporting folks that come into the facility, offering them support, resources, and referrals to other agencies, ours being one of them. So, I can tell you that they really are a true partner and committed to the individuals that come in the facility. The Human Service Department really has expanded our ability to collaborate with Mary's Place in Northwood County, and we'd be really excited to expand those services in Southwood County. Currently, we see a number of folks that live in Wisconsin Rapids enter the Riverblock Building just a little bit ways away from here, and we don't have a place to send them for additional support. So, we call Mary's Place from time to time and ask them to step up and support. We've been very fortunate that we've been able to rely on them to support residents in Wisconsin Rapids. That's why I believe it's time now to move towards a facility in Wisconsin Rapids so we can keep folks in our community where their loved ones are, where they have additional support, by providing them an opportunity. That's really what Mary's Place is, an opportunity for folks to get a start, to get some support, and really move forward in their lives. And I think everybody deserves an opportunity. So, everybody has some difficult circumstances from time to time, and I think being able to provide them that hand-up and support with a great deal of resources is incredibly important. There's some discussion about the location. I can't think of a better location in Wisconsin Rapids to have this facility. We're in walking distance to the Riverblock Building, where they can get support for mental health concerns they may have, get access to referrals for helping them get food, access for a multitude of other things that help them with job search and other community supports. So, I think that walkability is incredibly important for folks that may struggle with transportation. So, I think that location really is excellent. We talk about jobs. There's jobs all over Wisconsin Rapids. So, the ability to have a facility on A Street, I don't, in my opinion, I don't think that's as valuable of having a facility that's close to the resources in Wisconsin Rapids. So, as you consider this decision, I would ask you to think about the long-term impact of this housing unit within the city. We know there's a great need, and we know that there's people in Wisconsin Rapids that deserve another chance or a chance. There's families, and there's individuals that would like to stay in Wisconsin Rapids and be able to give back after they succeed through the programming. So, I thank you for your attention and time and for your consideration.
Thank you. Does anybody else? Come on up.
I think I might be last, so don't worry. My name is Sue Smith. I serve as the Wood County Health Officer and Director of the Wood County Health Department, and I've been in that role for 17 and a half years now. The Wood County Community Health Assessment is a collaborative effort led by a coalition called Healthy People Wood County. The Wood County Health Department, Marshfield Clinic Health System, and Aspirus Riverview Hospital and Clinics conducted surveys, community conversations, and key informant interviews, excuse me, to identify the greatest health needs, community assets, and ideas to develop a comprehensive plan to improve the health of Wood County residents. In 2019, this assessment determined that housing is a high priority and has been an increasing concern since the COVID-19 pandemic hit. Wood County Health Department is committed to working with community partners, including Mary's Place, to improve access to affordable, safe, and quality housing for those living in Wood County. This project will directly impact people who are in need of, in need of safe and supportive housing in Southwood County, and will help address the lack of housing, especially housing supporting people in recovery in this area. Housing is a basic need, and lack of housing creates significant, significant negative health effects, including infectious diseases, chronic diseases, physical injuries, mental health illnesses, nutritional concerns, and more. So, as Human Services Director Brewink has said, I ask that you please consider the long-term impact that expanding the transitional housing program in Southwood County will have on our most vulnerable residents, and how access to this resource, resource could place them on a trajectory of success. And I'll just finish with one thing. I had the opportunity to attend the Wisconsin Counties Association Conference over the last two days in Wisconsin Dells. And Mark Donald, their CEO, has said, "For many of us, our purpose is to assist people that we will never meet and help generations that we will never see." So, I hope that you keep that in mind with your decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak and support? Come on up, sir. Mr. Altman.
Hi. My name's Tom Altman, and I'll be real brief. This is just a great opportunity to make a significant investment in the community. There's definitely a need in the community. Just the plans are already state-approved, so if this would, if you guys would approve this project, work would start pretty quick. And just, if you would take the opportunity to put new life into this building that, you know, is not in too good a shape right now. So, this is a great investment for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Anybody would like to speak against this project? Come on up. State your name and your address, please, sir.
My name's Ron Martin. I've had businesses here in town for quite a few years, for over 40 years. I don't think this is the place for that project right now. I, I think there's too much drug activity and everything over there already, and I don't think our police department is doing a good job of policing it. What's the success and failure rate of these people coming here and finding jobs, or will they even, when they do, if they don't find a job, what are they going to do? We already lost a lot of jobs from the people that worked in the mills and everything, and these people, they, they haven't got a job neither right now. Who did, who's going to do the maintenance and everything on this building? This is going to cost money. Somebody's going to do it, and are they going to be self-sustaining with these people if they're in there for six weeks, six months, or whatever, and they don't even have a job? How are they going to help pay for the utilities and such? I don't think this is a good spot. And, and like I said, I have property right adjacent to it. I just was called this afternoon. I have a stepson over there, and there was a fellow, camp's right out on his deck. He calls the police department. The police don't even have time to come over, they, they said. And in Marshfield, St. Vincent de Paul, they built the home there for the same type of people and everything, and after just a couple of years, they had to turn it over to the county because they couldn't even sustain themselves. So, the city ended up with the building, and I don't know what they ever did with it, but, and it was a brand-new home. Most of, all the labor, I think, was donated, and most of the materials was donated. There, I don't know, a few people lived right there. I think you would say, hey, we got enough drug problems and everything here in our area right now. I don't know. I, I just don't believe that's a good spot for it. There should be other spots along the main drag and A Street where it can be policed better and everything. There's cars going by there all the time, police squads and everything. They just don't do it here. And I guess that's about all I've got to say to it.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Anyone else like to speak? Come on up, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Tori Peterson. My husband and I live at 550 8th Avenue South. We share a property line with this proposed shelter. I'm back again today to implore you to vote no to allowing Mary's Place to move into 520 8th Avenue South. As I stated the last time I spoke here, the residents of our neighborhoods surrounding this property do not want it there. At the last hearing, you sided with those. At the last hearing, you sided with those that want the shelter. There's one problem with that. Ninety-nine percent of the people that spoke out then and tonight about wanting that shelter, they either work at Mary's Place, or they're going to benefit financially from it, or they don't live anywhere near it. I know that law enforcement is in favor of this shelter as well. I have the greatest respect and regard for them. However, to the best of my knowledge, none of them will be living anywhere near this shelter. You should be listening to those of us who do. All of us are just like you. We work hard for what we have. We raise our families. We want to live in peace in our homes. Why would you inflict this on us, or any other residential neighborhood for that matter? I have heard a lot of good things about Mary's Place since the last hearing. It sounds like a place that could be quite beneficial to many of the homeless in our area. It's something that's needed. The Mary's Place in Marshfield has assisted a lot of people. However, Mary's Place in Marshfield is not in a residential neighborhood. Why does this one have to be? Surely, 520 Eighth Avenue South is not the only vacant building in our town. The last hearing did nothing to alleviate my concerns about Mary's Place. The staff may have tight control over what goes on inside that building, but they have zero control, by their own admission, last time. I believe it was Jim Joyce that spoke, over who shows up there unannounced. Once someone's turned away at the door, what happens then? I've been told that Mary's Place would provide them transportation to a different shelter. Okay. What if they refuse? Then they're wandering the neighborhood. And let's not be naive, a great deal of our homeless are seriously drug-addicted and/or mentally ill. That is where our concerns come, I'm sorry, that's when our concerns about crime, primarily vandalism and theft, come from. The shelter will be a magnet for such people. What if they're turned away, and they're very upset, they start acting out? I was told that law enforcement would be called to handle the situation, and that's just the drama that we do not want in our neighborhood. I agree these people need our help, but does a residential neighborhood loaded with families and small children have to be sacrificed to do it? Quite a few of my neighbors who don't want the shelter didn't even bother to come here today. They feel as though no one is really listening to us anyway, so why bother? They feel as though the placement of the shelter was decided long ago by the powers that be, and this hearing is just a formality to slide it in. Please, prove them wrong.
If you could wrap it up.
Please listen to those, a couple more sentences, please listen to those of us that will have to live next door, across the street, or in the general vicinity of this shelter. Please stand up for us. Help us. Please do not allow this shelter to move into our neighborhood. Find a more suitable place.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak against?
Amy Hopkins, 541 Eighth Avenue South, directly cat a corner from the building. I've heard repeatedly that if they violate your house rules, they'll be asked to leave immediately. That's great. Where do they go? They're drunk, they're high, they're whatever. You've told them to leave. Now they're stuck in our neighborhood, and we get to deal with them. Great. Thanks. Didn't think about us, did you?
Anyone else wish to speak against? Everybody who wants to be heard, have they been heard? Okay. Counsel, what are your thoughts, wishes, questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
So a motion by Austin, seconded by Veneman to approve the request. Mr. Zachary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that there are two different things that we're talking about, and I don't think anybody in this room or in our community don't want to see the folks that need help get help. I don't think that's ever been a concern or a point for anybody. And I do have a lot of respect for the people who have built Mary's Place from the ground up and have run it. Pete, you haven't really been acknowledged here, but Pete's the guy who makes it all happen inside the building, and it takes a very special person to be able to do that on a day-to-day basis. And we hope that, you know, if the building does go through in Rapids, that we can have another Pete, you know, and Adam that, you know, is taking care of things on the outside. You have the board. You have a lot of people that are vested in this. And I think that if it does go through, we do stand a better chance of being able to monitor it and keep it on the right track because there's accountability. So, that being said, I don't think that this is the right place to put it. I see a lot of kids in the neighborhood that are struggling, you know, that it's just a, I don't think it's a good mix. And I understand that there's a lot of people that want to see it go in, and it is different when you're looking at it from the outside, you know, far away, and saying, "This is great, this is great." And again, if we could all think that, that'd be awesome, but as soon as it's going in next to your house and you're seeing what it can do to your neighborhood and the kids around and everything else, that's, that's hard. So, and again, it's not, maybe A Street isn't the best place. I guess I'll just make a little proposal that I think we're closing down a county jail that has a lot of room and could be revamped with two and a half million dollars. Maybe we could figure something else out where they're that much closer to the services that they need. There's lots of rooms there, and maybe, maybe there's something that could happen there. But I don't think that it should go into this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zachary. We can, any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
Thank you, Your Honor. I thought I pushed the button.
You did. I'm just blind.
I, uh, would like to speak in favor of this project. I had some questions that I asked earlier on, is to clarify some things. I was here last week when the public hearing took place. I was making some notes here as the conversation was going on, both for and against. But I think it's, those can mostly be somewhat thrown out, but can follow some of it to And I'm just going to start with maybe which would be the negative part. And it's something that, and I've been on this council for a long time, it's something that I used to hear about quite often in this community. And it had to do with the five initials of N-I-M-B-Y. Not in my backyard. I've listened to all last weekend, tonight. There is a need for this. I don't believe anybody spoke against that. A very interesting one was by one of the speakers of organizations wanting to be involved, donating things and that type of stuff, but what came out was, a positive with that was, for those that go through something like this, if you were in some type of addiction program, alcohol, whatever, that you need help afterwards. You need to sponsor. I heard that mentioned. I heard about the aftercare. If all that becomes true, this can be, I think, something that can develop into something that's very positive, positive for the neighborhood. Hopefully, in five or ten years, people will say, "What is that building? We haven't had any problems here." There's guidelines that the people have to go through to get in. It's not just going to be somebody peddling dope downtown or whatever, drunk off the street, to come and stay that night. I have concerns about the drugs in the area, too. This, as they are talking, they are trying to very much put a handle on, control it, and to make it work. There are a lot of people in this community, down and out, in one way or another, that This is one that then goes, does not go on to the tax base for us, but some things we have to look and go past that. The building has sat empty for how long? That doesn't help the neighborhood. To me, to rebuild this, to energize it, to get people in there, to give them some confidence, and they're also required, as I recall, to go out every day, I think it was between ten and two or something like that, were the hours, to look for a job. Someone has mentioned about going to the library or whatever to look for a job. They have to go out and do that. It's not a place where they flop for twenty-four hours a day. I've listened to the restrictions and what's on there. I'm not an expert on it, but I've listened here for a couple of weeks now. I am one who is where he believes. That's the best thing we can do, is when somebody needs that help, is offer them that hand, to stretch it out, to help them get up off their knees, give them some respect, Seems like the easy thing maybe to say, but it's one of those that you hear occasionally, it's the right thing to do. I think this council should support this. I believe with the restrictions and that, or the, however, whatever you want to call it, the guidelines that are there to be looked at, for people to be in there to, so they're not going to be the drug addicts and the homeless looking for a one-night to stay, as was mentioned, like the Salvation Army and things like that do. And you do see a lineup at those places, good weather and bad, for people that have to get in, want to get in. Me, this is just something that is the right thing to do. I don't know if we all know people in these situations or not. My guess is that we probably have over the, over our lives. This is giving them another opportunity to get back into that workforce, find a job, become self-sufficient, rent a house, hopefully, apartment building, whatever, and hopefully, after time, and they make that living or whatever, hopefully, they could become a homeowner So I just think it's something that the council, that we should approve. And thank you for giving me the time, Your Honor, to make these few statements and that, but I think it's something that we have to wrestle in our own minds, what we want to do and what we want this community to be known for and looked at to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Veneman.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the previous hearing and open hearing and this evening, one of the things that was mentioned was the, it seemed that it came up several times at the last meeting as well as this evening, by people that opposed against it, the existing drug activity in the neighborhood as it is. And that was mentioned, like I said, at the last meeting as well. Wisconsin Rapids is not unique in this society to the amount of our drug activity that we have in this community. It's obviously running rampant pretty much across the board and throughout the country. That being said, I do not think putting a recovery facility in an area that has drug traffic is going to increase the drug traffic in that area at all. It's a place of recovery. I have a lot of experience in recovery, and I won't elaborate on that, but I think it's a positive thing for the city. I agree with Mr. Raum in that aspect. The, a lot of measures have been put in place, and I think putting a recovery facility and a place to rebuild lives facility in an area may be, may be tough for, for the neighbors to look at, and but I don't believe that's going to increase drug activity. If it's an existing problem, maybe those, the existing drug activity in the area will see some positive impact from it. I, I'm, I'm in favor of this project, as I'm in favor of recovery when needed. And I don't, I understand the possibility to put it in a different location. I understand people's requests for that. I don't know that putting it on Eighth Street in the middle of a business district is going to be any more beneficial for recovery or not, but I do think that the, with the support of law enforcement, the mental health officer from the sheriff's department is in favor of it. It seems like the, things are put in place to make this thing work, and as Mr. Raum said, possibly be a positive thing for the community in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other people wish to speak?
people wish to speak? All right. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven As and one Nay. This would be the time to sneak out if you wanted to sneak out. Unless you want to stay for the rest of our agenda. It could be just as informative. Thank you. Mary Beth and Preston, we're getting there. Thank, thank you for staying. All right. If we can move on to item 11, which is consider for the adoption, the action of the standing committees of the common council as follows. Item A is the Finance and Property Committee, Committee meeting held on September 7, 2022. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry, yes. Mr. Zachary, got it. The chairman was there for a second.
Thank you. Finance and Property Committing, Committee, Property Committee met at 4:05 on Wednesday, September 7, 2022. All members of the Finance Property Committee were present. Alderman Veneman attended via video conferencing. A list of everybody else present is listed below. Item number one, call order. Chairperson Zachary called the meeting to order at 4:05 PM. Item number two, consider request from 1716 LLC, doing business as 1716 Mary Beth Servin, agent for retail class B fermented malt beverages license and retail class B intoxicating liquor license for the premises located at 1716 Baker Street. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachary to approve this motion. Motion carried three to zero. Item number three, consider for, consider a request from the fire department to use the insurance money from the Ford pickup settlement last October to be used to purchase a Dodge one-half-ton crew cab to replace that vehicle. It was moved by Zachary, seconded by Bemke to approve the motion, and the motion carried three to zero. Item number four, review and consider approval of a request from Insight Telecom Company for a 10-foot-wide permanent utility easement along the existing retaining wall on the east side of Robinson Park to install and maintain new fiber optic lines. Insight is offering compensation of $2,000 for this permanent utility easement in Robinson Park. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachary to tentatively approve the request from Insight Telecom Company for a 10-foot-wide permanent eas, utility easement along the existing retaining wall on the east side of Robinson Park to install and maintain a new fiber optic lines with the requested compensation of $15,000 for Insight for this permanent utility easement. With all improvements in facilities being, being underground and below grade, and allow the city engineer to negotiate with the company within the negotiation parameters the committee has given to him regarding compensation for the easement. Any compensation received from the easement shall be used to, for future park and recreation department projects. Motion carried three to zero. Item number five, consider for approval a revision to the policy governing the procedures and guidelines for the acquisition, transfer, and disposal of the city of Wisconsin Rapids mass transit vehicles. It was moved by Veneman, seconded by Bemke to approve this motion. Motion carried three to zero. Item number six, audit of the bills. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to approve check numbers 13881 to 14245. Motion carried three to zero. Item number seven, review and consider for approval 2022 budget amendment resolution number three. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachary to approve 2022 budget amendment resolution number three as presented. Motion carried three to zero. Item number eight, 2023 budget discussion. The 2023 budget was discussed, discussed. No action was taken on this item. Item number nine, set next meeting date. Next regular meeting committee meeting, next regular committee meeting is set for Tuesday, October 4, 2022, at 4:00 PM. Item number 10, adjournment is moved by Bemke, seconded by Veneman to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero. The meeting adjourned at 4:55 PM. With that, I respectfully submit the notes to the board, to the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Zachary. Mr. Delaney?
Can I hold out for?
Yep. Everybody good with holding out for? Okay. Ms. Everson?
I'd like to hold out item number seven.
Seven and four. And Mr. Raume? Yes. Okay, we have a motion by Veneman and seconded by Bemke to approve the balance of that report.
Other way around.
We have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Veneman, to approve the balance of that report. Any other discussions on that? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. All right. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Congratulations on your license and look forward to the community to be able to experience your talents. So, thank you. So regarding item four, I guess, Mr. Delaney, I think held that out.
I just have a few questions about this item. Okay, so we're given 302 feet approximately of a easement, and I just have questions about easements.
Yep, Mr. Aigsted would, can fill you in.
Okay. These easements are, they're permanent easements so that they're always going to own this property? Is it going to be? So it's in the right-of-way?
It, it is outside of the right-of-way, and it, and it is a permanent easement, so it's, it's solely on park, park property.
Okay. Is this, there is a value to it? Is it going to be put into the GIS and they are then going to be the owners of that, and then they're going to have to pay property taxes on that easement?
So the, the city would still own the, the park land, but that section that's within the permanent easement would, would, the easement relinquishes some rights to the utility company, once signed and approved, within the context of the easement agreement. They're allowed those, those specific rights.
Okay, so there is a, a value here, and I'm just trying to, has anybody spoken with the assessor as to?
Yes, since the Property and Finance Committee meeting, we did get a valuation from the assessor, and the value that they arrived at was $3,217 for the, for the permanent easement. It's based on 26% of, of market value, which is, I guess, typical for these types of permanent easements.
So it's at 20, so it's really should be four times that number that you had said. Thirty, $3,200? Is that what you said? Is that correct?
Yeah, $3,217 is what they arrived at.
And that's at 26% of market value?
Correct.
So my, my question comes, is it going to be put into the GIS and are they going to be listed as that, the owner of that, and are they going to be taxed on that every year?
No, they would not be, they would not have a separate parcel for that, that easement. It is, it would be something that can be mapped, and it could be provided in the GIS for mapping purposes, but not for, for parcel identification and tax purposes.
And did he give you a reason that it was at 26% and not the full 100% value of this land?
No, I'm just, it's just based upon their typical percentage for permanent easements for utility companies. Beyond that, I'm, I'm not certain.
Well, in my opinion, I would think that it would be valued at 100%, especially if there's not going to be yearly taxes on it. They're going to have rights to this property and not have to pay taxes. Is that correct?
Right. They're not, they're not, they're not going to own the property. We're going to continue to own the property. It's just like an easement that you might have on your property where there are underground utilities. That just allows the utility to put something underground. It doesn't affect any other interest in the property, so we still own the property. They can't, I mean, they can solely use it to install utilities below ground, and I think what Joe was getting at is generally, when you determine what the cost of an, or what the value of an easement is, and what the assessor is saying is it's 26% of the fair market value of the property itself, because they're not, we're not selling them the property. They're not getting the property. We're retaining it. But there is some value to allow them to put things underground, and so that's why you get the 26%. But they're not going to own it. We are going to continue to own it, own that property.
Thank you. Done.
Ms. Everson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was watching the, the meeting, and I think this is a good thing for the fiber optic line to go through, and I know they said, you know, they had to kind of go that way because of the bridge. They just can't get around it. What I do have a question about is, at the meeting, they were saying the 10-foot right-of-way from the retaining wall, but then I, when I was listening, I was hearing people say 20 foot, 20 feet. So is it 10 feet right from the retaining wall and then another 10 feet out? Could you clarify on that? I missed that. I couldn't understand that in the meeting.
So the easement itself is 10 feet wide and then the entire length along the city parkland. So a 10-foot-wide easement, it's 27 feet off of the proposed, or the existing right-of-way that's out there, but it does vary its location or distance away from the retaining wall, so that, that does vary along the, the length of the easement.
And then, I know I walk by there all the time, there's a lot of trees along there. I'm a tree hugger, sorry. So how, I mean, I'm, I'm certain they're probably boring. They would bore it anyways, but I was just wondering, I mean, I know some of those trees are very old, and they are kind of close. I know the city always is cutting them kind of down over the pass there, but would any of that be affected?
I don't believe any trees are, are impacted by the, by the easement. The easement's, I guess, positioned such that there aren't any trees in that location, and then in addition, the installation, I believe, is, is bi-directional boring, so, you know, they, they'll just have a couple bore pits, and they'll be able to pull the length, 300, 400 feet through at a given installation method.
And is that going by the tracks? Are they coming through that way or are they going?
It would be
I mean, I was trying to
west of the highway, and they are headed north and south, so they do have to cross the, the tracks.
And then that won't affect any? I know we have the Frisbee Golf in that corner, kind of by the tracks right there, but that's far enough away as well. That wouldn't be in the right-of-way or anything?
Yeah, I don't believe there's, there's any, any impacts to any park features or city infrastructure.
And just to clarify, we are tax, we, we don't pay tax on that park anyways because we're tax exempt, so we're not kind of with Patrick, we're, we're not losing any money per se, but, thank you.
Also, I guess, just to clarify, I think the 20-foot number came in was because the, there's a 10-foot easement with the state, with the wall there? And then there's the 10-foot for this easement.
That, that could be. I know when, when the highway was built, there was a plat that, that the DOT had put together for the highway project. I don't, I don't recall those specific values, but.
It sounds good. I think that's what Nick was talking about, and that's where the 20-foot number came from.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bemke?
So, Joe, since the finance, finance meeting, have you talked to Insight and discussed our counter to their initial and what was the reaction, if you did?
Yes, we did reach out to them, and they, they're firm with the, the $2,000. Their rationale is that they, they believe it's fair compensation since there's nothing, no infrastructure that they're putting above ground. Everything will be ground level or below, and that the easement is so close to the retaining wall that it doesn't, doesn't have any encumbrance really on the, on the park land.
So do you have a recommendation going forward then? I, I guess, is this going to come back to finance?
I guess it's, it's completely up to the council. I guess what I, I would add is that I believe utility companies are also subject to providing property owners with the, with a notice of property rights, that the property owner has, has a, a right to an appraisal. They did not provide an appraisal to the city. There is a cost associated with that. I don't know, Sue, if you have any details as far as that process exactly, but that's my understanding, that there is some, some benefit to the, to a property owner that, you know, I guess, city could take advantage of if we'd like.
Right. We could make them go through the process of basically kind of not condemning the property, but, but trying to obtain an easement and, and giving us just compensation, just the same as we might with, you know, when we're doing work and, and need property, so. I, it's, you know, I guess there is some leverage there to avoid that whole process and have appraisals and so on, and to reach agreement for an amount.
So I guess it goes back to the question, what do we do now? What do you recommend we do now?
As far as the value, I, I, I think you, the park and rec, because it is in a park, they, I think you have the minutes that you'll just probably review at the end of the meeting, but it was, this was taken to park and rec, and it's their recommendation to, obviously, to at least get the amount that the assessor has assessed, which is the $3,200 or so. I'm not familiar with the exact, you know, location and so on. I mean, I've seen it on a map, but I guess I would defer to others for what a reasonable amount might be, but I would definitely at least, I would recommend at least the amount that, that the assessor has, has come up with. I think 15 is probably not, not, not reasonable. But I don't know if, I mean, I don't know if, if Joe has a recommendation or, or not, but I would definitely recommend the 30, 3,200 and, you know, it's, I think that would be reasonable, but that's just, I, I'm not familiar with, with the property.
So regarding a recommendation as, as far as having a utility line at that location, I don't see any, any issues with it. I went out on site, saw the, the stakes that are out there. It is very near the wall. No above-ground infrastructure is being installed, so no issues in that regard. We've been working with Insight throughout the entire summer on their, their project to get their utility through the city. We've already permitted two segments of it along 54 and along the expressway, and they've been, they've been actively doing that project. So, but coming down to a value, it's totally at the discretion of, of the council.
Thank you. Ms. Everson?
Thank you. So getting back to that, so if, if we direct Joe to, to try, you know, to get the 30, 3,200, I mean, how dire are they, I mean, I know they're, like you said, I mean, I know they've been working. I, I think this is a really good cause. I mean, I mean, it's, it's going to benefit the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids, so when are they trying to, when would they do that? This fall or?
My guess would be, yeah, likely this fall if it is approved. Otherwise, I guess if it's not approved, which is, which is completely an option for the council, they would, I guess, go back and figure out an alternative route. Maybe they already have a, a plan B in place. I'm not sure.
So what would the council, I mean, what does the council want to do? Do they want to take it back to, do you want to take it back to parks? Do they want to take it back to, do you want to take it back to parks if, if they won't go to the 3,200 after you talk with them and then keep doing this every month? Or do we want to give discretion that we say, okay, with the 2,000? I mean, I, I'd hate for it to just sit on it, but, but.
Yeah, through the course, and Mr. Veneman could probably speak too, is that, you know, I think Parks was fine with it going through the parkland and kind of leaving to the council to decide on the property or the value of that. But they were good with that easement going next to the wall there.
Yeah, that's, um, basically as, as Attorney Schill said, what, basically what we approved yesterday at, at Parks was to move forward with the project, but then leave the discretion to finance of, but a minimum of the 3,200 number. And, um, whether we think that, that it's more than, that it's worth more than 3,200, that's another story. But Parks basically reme, kicked it back to finance and said, yes, we, we approve of the easement, but the finance will have to take care of the dollar number. But we did, I think the actually official most, or the official approval was with the caveat that, um, engineering had the ability to start at 3,200.
Thank you. Mr. Delaney.
I have questions on if their equipment is damaged by that retaining wall. Is it our, um, responsibility, I'm being that, that's public property? Like, would we have to replace that? I'm, I'm just wondering about their, their equipment and our responsibility to their equipment.
Well, uh, we, I mean, just like any other easement, I, we, we can't do things that interfere with their, uh, use of the easement and use of the infrastructure, or the utility. So we can't go in and dig up their, their fiber optic line. Uh, I mean, we can't barricade the area so they can't access it, you know, if they need to for, to repair. I guess damage, uh, I mean, unless we're explicitly doing something that's pretty, uh, you know, grossly negligent to interfere, we're not going to be responsible. So, uh, I mean, I guess I would say our exposure is pretty limited in the situation where it's all underground, uh, and with the immunities and protections we have under law, it's not likely that we would have any exposure.
And is there a depth as far as the easement goes? Like, if we would like to run, uh, utilities under it in the future, could we still run under it? Or would we have to pay them back for where we need to run our stuff?
Yeah, there's no depth identified, I guess, in the, um, in the easement agreement. Typically, they'd install them about three to four feet deep.
And if, if we had to run something in the future, would that be a problem at all?
Um, I guess as long as we're not interfering with their, you know, ability to keep their lines there, I, I think, I don't think that would be an issue. Um, I mean, as, like I said, as long as we're not interfering, uh, and we, you know, if, if that was the instance, we probably would talk with them about, you know, that happening and making sure that we're not, you know, there's not going to be any issues. Uh, but I, you know, I don't know what the likelihood is that we would want to run something through there and what, what, what utility or what that might be, but.
So last year when we had, um, over here, when they ran that under West Grand, I think it was West Grand, um, after the fact, we had them take out insurance and also some sort of bond, I think it was like a $15,000 bond. Would any of that apply here?
Uh, well, we have in the easement agreement, um, I'm trying to think of what. The easement agreement that I think was in your pack, it was their template and we have a, uh, a different one. I mean, it's pretty similar. Uh, and I think they've agreed to that new template, right, Joe? At first they weren't going to.
Yes, that's correct.
And then we said, well, then you're not going to have an easement. And then they said, okay, well. So they're agreeing to our language. I mean, there are you, you know, the telecommunications act has certain, you know, they have certain responsibilities pursuant to that in terms of their ability to, you know, have, have rights to put infrastructure and so on. So I guess I'm, I'm not sure, since it's not in a, technically in a right-of-way, whether we would need them to have a, you know, an excavation permit. But I, but yeah, we would have, even though it's not in the right-of-way, they'd still have to get the excavation permit, correct?
Yeah.
So that would include bonding, insurance and so on. Since they're boring, that's right, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Honor. Um, I was against it at the parking rec last evening. There is the benefit to the residents, I guess, um, with that. But I think that, uh, not to lose sight of, is that there's a, um, I could almost say a bigger benefit to the company. Uh, maybe not this company, it's who's, uh, they're, um, uh, if they're a third party to it or not, but, uh, somebody's making money on this. Somebody's making a lot of money on this, or will. And it's somewhat, uh, I think for us to be held up for $2,000. If they have a second option, we don't know. Um, my, my firm belief would be that there is, because the project's not going to stop there. So, and my concern too is also that the permanent easement part of it, that the park would be given away. But if it was to be done, or what they're offering, and even the 3,200, that's almost a slap in the face, if I even have anything other than the parking rec can use the $3,200 in their budget. There's a lot more benefit to everybody in this situation. So let's not lose sight of tons of money that this company will be making, or their pittance of an offer of $2,000. They're not doing this out of the goodness of their heart. It has to go somewhere if it's going to be done. So it is just where. And this happens a lot of times. The cheapest way for any company is, they think the best way. But sometimes it's tiring of getting, taken advantage of. So I, I'm going to oppose it. Where it goes, uh, whatever, I think the parking rec was under the understanding it's going back to finance. But, uh, so that, that's just, uh, some comments I, um, I wanted to make is that because it's, there's a benefit to a lot of people for this, but there's a big financial benefit to some people. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Zachary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Joe, is, um, so is it going to ta, if we wait till next finance, is, are they waiting to move? Are they ready to go with the project?
Um, they've been doing various aspects of that and continuing to, to do work elsewhere along their route. And, um, they've got a significant amount of work to complete yet. So, um, I guess it's, it's entirely up to the council if, 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 if there's no easement agreement or no authorization to approve it, uh, we simply let them know that and then they can request some other location if it involves the city or if it's private property owners, they can, um, look to them to get an easement, wherever it might be.
And the assessor says 32 is just, that's what we pay. So I mean, in the end, it's kind of set up against the city or whoever's giving the easement, basically. It's not.
No.
You're just saying 26% of, of the 100% because it's underground and it's just the percentages they go by?
Yeah, my understanding is it's, it's kind of just a rule of thumb that the assessor's using to derive a value. Um, is, it's not an exact science on how they arrive at that number. It's just, it is a rule of thumb, just kind of a ballpark estimation.
Do you feel it would be more beneficial for you to be able to negotiate with them? Or do you want the, um, leverage to say, I want to go back to the finance committee over and over again?
Well, I guess ideally it would be if, if the council can decide if, yes, we'll allow the easement, but under what conditions? Like a minimum, uh, set of dollar amount or con, conditions? And if those are met, it's approved? And if not, it's, it's denied? That way it could, it could keep moving that way.
Yeah. So I, I'll make a motion to proceed forward with this, that, and we do it for $7,500. I think that would be the cap. So we're negotiating with them. See what they say. That's my motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Zachary, seconded by Mr. Veneman. Further discussion? Please cast your ballots. So that motion carried six a's and two nays. Item number seven, Ms. Evans.
I was looking for my notes. I couldn't find it. Um, I have no problem with the resolution because I know we, we approved it already or when we talked about it. But, um, my only concern, and I, I brought it up before, um, is I was confused as why we paid for a wage study almost two years ago that it's been in the process. When we continue to change job descriptions, reorganizations, get rid of positions, eliminate positions, um, we keep changing the variables. So I, I mean, common sense would tell me there's no way Carlson, Detman can, what they started with is the same as what they have now. It's constantly changing, 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 changing. And, I mean, we paid a lot of money for that study and I don't know if we're having to continue to pay every time we adjust things, but it just seems silly and now, and then we, and I agreed, I, I, I mean, I voted for it as well, the 3%, just because it, it would go back to January. But I guess I just, I'm just confused as why we paid for a, a wage study when we keep changing all the variables. That's just my comment. Thank you.
And what are your wishes? A motion by Delaney. To approve, I assume, and seconded by Veneman. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Do you have a power cord or?
No, it's in. You should be able.
I think there's a computer over by.
He's up and running. He's up.
Oh, okay.
He's got to get in.
Okay, that motion carried eight a's, zero nays. Uh, we're on to item B, which is the Public Works Committee meeting held September 8th, 2022. Ms. Ross?
Thank you, Mayor Blazer. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, September 8th, 2022, in the council chambers at City Hall. The meeting was called to order at 6:05 PM. Item two is review the engineering and street department monthly activity report. The engineering and street department reports were reviewed. Item three, review the traffic study at 13th Street South and Peach Street and consider modifying the traffic control signage. Joe Ikestead, city engineer, explained the engineering department's review of the uncontrolled intersection, specifying that no additional signage at the intersection was recommended based on the department's review, the department's policy and adherence to the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Daniel Potts of 240 13th Street South spoke about safety concerns she had at the intersection of 13th Street and Peach Street and that her preference would be to add a yield sign to the 13th Street approach at a minimum. After some discussion, motion was made by Pollock, uh, seconded by Evanson to install the yield signs at 13th Street approaches of the intersection. Motion carried three zero. Item four, review, a request to establish a quiet zone for train horns on the east side of the city. Requirements necessary to establish a railroad quiet zone were reviewed. An approximate cost from 2016 of $700,000 was identified to carry out proposed improvements that would be necessary to establish a railroad quiet zone on the east side of the city. Item five, review the bid results for the West River View Expressway Traffic Signal Improvement Project and consider awarding the contract to low-qualified bidder with scope provisions. Bids for the West River View Expressway Traffic Signal Improvement Project were reviewed. A single bid, bid from Pember Companies was received at, at a price of 739, or 793,617 dollars. This cost would be significantly higher than the DOT grant funding of approximately 535,000, meaning the city would incur significant additional costs if the project proceeds as bid. The city's options were discussed, including awarding the project as currently bid and incurring additional costs, as well as the option of denying bids and rebidding a smaller portion of the work, uh, at West Grand intersection in the future. After some discussion, motion was made by Evanson and seconded by Austin to deny the current bid from Pember Companies and rebid the project at a reduced scope by removing work at Chase Street and High Street with the intent of applying for an additional grant from the DOT to do the remaining work at Chase and High Streets at a later date. Item fi, item six was review the five-year capital improvement plan. A draft version of the 2023-2027 capital improvement plan was reviewed. Highlighted revisions from last year's capital improvement plan were discussed. Item seven, review a preliminary resolution for public work and improvements for Lincoln Street between East River View Expressway and Peach Street, uh, proposed for construction in 2024. The need for the approval of a preliminary resolution in order to proceed with survey and eventual design work for Lincoln Street between River View Expressway and Peach Street was reviewed. Motion by Evanson, seconded by Pollock, to approve preliminary resolution for public work and improvements for Lincoln Street between River View Expressway and Peach Street. Motion carried three zero. Item eight was review the referral list, which was reviewed and updated. Item eight was review the referral list, which was reviewed and updated. Item nine was the next meeting date, which was set for Thursday, October sixth, two thousand twenty-two, at five P M. And item ten was adjournment, motion by Pollock, seconded by Evanson, to adjourn at seven nineteen. And with that, I'll submit the report of the Public Works Committee to council for approval.
Sounds good. Any items need to be held out? So a motion by Delaney, seconded by Evanson. Go ahead, Mr. Delaney.
I just wanted to say, over the past month, I've been driving around the city and I've seen the city workers. And every time that I come up on them, they are like working their butts off, which is crazy. Normally, you come upon government employees who are their job is to prop up a shovel and keep it from falling over. But they've really been doing a great job and it's I mean, if it was just one time, I mean, that could have been a fluke, but it's been quite a few times. So excellent job.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney, and I'm sure they appreciate it. Mr. Raum.
I agree. I have a question on number, I guess, number four, start with. I mean, I may want to hold out one different one, too, but on the quiet zone, I guess, where where do we go from here? There was a cost figure from six years ago. Is this to be something that we want to consider pursuing to look at to see what can be done? Some have said that it may be the time for a city. This was to be continued to look at a citywide quiet zone. So I guess I've just, you know, as it's we have this here and I guess it's still on the agenda on a yeah, the would be on the agenda, but it's the intent here to pursue this to see what can be done. I guess that's question I would have as we're dealing with figures from about six years ago. So obviously, those have gone up. And I guess the feeling is of is it something that we want to consider doing anyway, establishing quiet zone? There have been complaints over the years of not by a lot of people, but the different number of people, not always the same ones over the years of trains on both sides of the river at certain hours of the day. Hours are usually during the evening that people are complaining about for the most part. Evening hours. So it's just is this something that the council wouldn't, I think, like us to pursue? Like I said, I believe it's still left on the committee's agenda. But is it something that we're really would be really be really looking at interested in pursuing? I don't know if anybody has comments right now or not, but I guess I would like to see that we pursue this and to see what the cost would be to look at, to bring it back, what other cities have done. I've been surprised going through coming into some cities and when I got off the maybe the your main road of see their off the streets from that, all of a sudden to come up on a crossing that it's announced that it's a quiet zone. And so I'm just wondering, as I've said, is it something we want to pursue? With the dollar figure, it's not cheap. So it's something that would definitely take a hard look at to do. With that, item number six, I guess, and it's the capital improvement plan. And I guess just for maybe the review of my my mind is a I don't believe it's on there. I've looked, but where where do we stand on redoing Burt Street and back of the library? I mean, just an overpay overlay or anything? We haven't, I mean, that's we haven't done anything. Is there intent to do something at some point in the near future with that?
So in, Mayor, you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it was May we submitted projects for possible ARPA funds usage. And that was one of the streets that I put on there for that use. If it does not see ARPA funds, one of the we actually just had wastewater treatment plant within the last two or three weeks, maybe even less, televise the sanitary main there because I looked at possibly using that area for not necessarily our milling fill because there's concrete under probably forty percent of that. So we would have to remove the concrete and then add road base and then do our pavement structure. So we have to have a conversation now with wastewater because when they televise that, there is a high percentage of joints that are leaking groundwater. And so the question would be when could they fit that into their schedule to possibly line it if lining is the proper fix for the sanitary sewer? I personally don't feel that we should redo the surface of the road if the sanitary is leaking because it could cause problems on a brand-new road, five years, two years, ten years, no years. So it is on our schedule. At the we've had a discussion between myself and Joe and the mayor on how we should proceed with the you know, the milling fill and the street utility funds that are generated. And that is something that you'll probably see in the future as far as suggestions to the Public Works Committee on streets to do those improvements on and then make decisions there similar to our capital improvement plan.
Thank you. I think it's something that should be looked at. And I guess the other one, and I think I think I'll hold it out and just have the discussion on it that way so we don't have a separate hold on it would be number three.
Everybody good with holding out three? Okay. Mr. Austin.
Thank you, Mayor Blazer. I just wanted to touch on Tom's comments about the quiet zone and potential path forward. As you all know, we've we've approved thirty thousand dollars plus for a study to be done on the west side that also included quiet zones. So that should give us an accurate idea of what the costs will look like. I too am in favor. If we're going to do it in one area, we should do it everywhere, right? So I think at that point, that'll give us a real good idea of what the costs are going to be and we can make a decision from there.
Sounds good. Thank you. So any other questions on the balance of the report? We're holding out item number three. Seeing nothing further. Please cast your ballot.
No.
That motion carried eight As, zero Nays regarding item three, Mr. Raum.
Yeah, I as fun as it's around him, I had several times of which way to go. And I I held this out because I think it's one that I have to vote no on. That is his recommendation from the staff. I know people in the area see a need for it. There, the staff, at least the comments they had from the P D was there hasn't been recordable accidents there. So it's just I just don't know that it's something that we have to do. And in this case, I will agree with the staff's recommendation on it. And I so that's why I held it out just to be able to vote no on it.
Thank you. Ironically, we had a city truck here not too long ago. Was it totaled at an uncontrolled intersection? Mr. Delaney.
I'm Joel. When we had the meeting, we had some residents here and it kind of seemed to me like you had maybe I don't know if you completely agreed with what they were saying or if you didn't agree at all with what they were saying as far as needing signage. But you did also identify nine, I think there were nine other intersections like very similar to this. And if we do something with this, we should do something with those as well. Has have you changed your mind on that at all or?
No, the the recommendation that we provide in the report does does stand. Just one correction to the report that was provided in the packet, though, is that there was an accident that was received through the police department this year, March twenty-second, involved a right angle accident. But regarding the recommendation, you know, when we look at these isolated intersections, we're largely held to the to the to the local policy that we have that is largely identified in in the report along with, you know, and that that local or policy is is largely based upon the the Wisconsin Manual of Uniform Traffic Control and the the federal version. I think we get into a little bit of flexibility when we look at an entire neighborhood and how and how we would recommend directing traffic through a neighborhood. There's one hundred and fourteen vehicles per day at this intersection. It's it's a pretty low-volume intersection. I guess the only caveat to all of this is that it is an anomaly in the vicinity of East Grand and Twelfth Street and Sixteenth Street and Chestnut. But we do have intersections like that elsewhere in the city as well.
Okay, so just to be clear, you still stand by the original recommendation not to do anything at this intersection?
Yep, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Austin.
So this is another one of those intersections that doesn't qualify for specific signage by the skin of its teeth, literally, you know? And what was discussed at at the committee meeting as well was what other signage was in the area. And so to conform more to what's currently there as far as yield signs, especially in in that particular direction, it was discussed that this would kind of bring that into conformance. So you know, what we don't want to do is start second guessing our engineer on every little call that he makes, right? But when it comes to these scenarios, when you have concerned residents coming in and, you know, you're just barely not meeting the criteria, I think that falls on us to start making that decision. And we decided unanimously to to put signage at this intersection. And I'm going to stick by that decision. So thank you.
I've got a question. Joe, so with uncontrolled intersection, is the thought the manual said, oh, whatever the manual says, but is it is it cost prohibitive to sign every uncontrolled intersection? Or I just I don't understand why. I'm not a fan of uncontrolled intersections. And obviously, you know, we've got a told city truck and, you know, I don't understand the concept of the uncontrolled intersection other than is it just not make any sense to put a sign at every intersection?
Yeah, I don't think I don't. I don't believe it's a cost prohibitive item. Certainly, we have many more controlled intersections than uncontrolled in the city. But nevertheless, the the traffic control, I guess, hierarchy is meant to build upon itself. So you start at you start at the bottom with uncontrolled, the least amount, and then you work your way up. You know, obviously, I mean, we look at a lot of things. We look at traffic speeds. We look at traffic numbers, vision, accident history. All of those things do factor into that. Certainly, if you know, I don't contest the the motion that the committee made. It it'll likely be fine, but I I do have to stick to stick to the the results of our study and in that recommendation.
Yeah, I guess my question was just more general on uncontrolled intersections versus this one, but thank you. So what are your wishes? We have a motion by Mr. Veneman to approve as presented. And a seconded by Mr. Austin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven As and one Nay. Onward to item C, Human Resource Committee meeting held on September thirteen, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Bevkey.
Thank you, Mayor. Human Resource Committee met September thirteenth at one thirty P M. Meeting was called order at one thirty-three P M. Item number two, there was an H R update, A, speaker piece presentation, B, recruitment update, and C, a safety committee update. Discussion and updates were given and no action was taken. Item number three, discuss and consider for approval the addition of six new firefighter positions with three of the positions contingent upon an award of a safer grant for three positions. The grant will pay for three positions for three years and the city can reapply for the grant after three years. It was a motion by Delaney, seconded by Raum, to approve the addition of six new firefighter positions with three of the positions contingent upon an award of a safer grant for three for the three positions. The grant will pay for three positions for three years and the city will reapply for the grant after three years. Three non-grant positions are contingent upon funding of the positions in the two thousand twenty-three budget and would be effective January first, two thousand twenty-three. Excuse me, January, two thousand twenty-three. Motion carried three zero. Item four, discussion regarding onsite fitness program. Program discussion occurred. Human Resources will gather proposals for onsite fitness providers along with proposal for onsite fitness testing programs for W R F D and W R P D. Item five, adjournment, motion made by Raum, seconded by Delaney to adjourn. Motion carried three zero. Meeting adjourned at two twenty.
And what are your wishes? We have a motion by Raum and seconded by Mr. Austin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven As and one Nay. We are on to item twelve, reports of other committees, commission boards, and department reports. What are your wishes on that? You were passed out, obviously, you know, realized that our commission was held last night, so that report is on your desk. Uh, we have a motion by Bevkey, seconded by Delaney. Any further discussions? There's a lot of library reports and it's nice to see somebody from the library here to, to be able to answer some questions along with Mr. Austin. He's not always on the hot seat then. All right. Seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Run to referrals to other committees. No referrals. Item fourteen, adjournment. We have a motion? We have a motion by Evanson, seconded by Mr. Zachar. Seeing no further, is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, cast your ballots. Yeah. Uh, Mr. Raum? So that's eight As, zero Nays. Thank you, everyone.